Everybody who called this meeting to order, could all please rise for the invocation? We have Ann Grandell with Loving. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for being with us.
Father, despite the challenges we have been facing, we are so grateful for this amazing nation and beautiful community you have given us. We ask you to give each of these leaders and the city staff wisdom and clarity. Help them to be open to opinions which differ from their own, seeking to achieve viable solutions without compromising their integrity or their principles. Shower them with strength, health, and peace. Protect them and their families. Lighten the load of their responsibilities. Unify our nation and our community, Lord. Help us to have mutual respect and work together for peace and prosperity, which we pray glorifies you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Councilman Forbes, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
... United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, verily, and just as for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Here.
Councilwoman Dewitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Carr.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Aye. Well, good morning. We're going to start our meeting this morning with public comment on agenda items. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Thank you, Meg.
Good morning, everybody. I guess I've been chosen to be first. For the record, my name is Kathy McGrath. And on the consent agenda, of course, to me, it's a no-brainer. Item D, the concessionaire agreement with Colusa Coast Tours. They're such an asset to downtown Benita, so, as I said. And the other one that's very important that I had known about is item G, Holmontis for the Old 41 Road Crossing at Benita Drive. It'll be very beneficial, for one thing, for all the children from school, they won't have to traverse on East Terry Street. They'll be able to cross right there, and I think it'll be a big difference, so, thank you. Oh, and by the way, whatever Bonnie has to say, I agree with.
Thank you, Kathy.
Did she clear it?
Good morning. I'm Bonnie Whitmore. Thank you, Kathy. There's four that I need to comment on. D, amending and going forward with DTE Kayaks Agreement, that's a no-brainer. He's known throughout the whole state for all the good he brings and the attention he gets in Benita Springs. And E is the adoption resolution about the work that the historic preservation has been doing in regards to getting an RFP for the initial study for downtown or citywide historic district. And I want to talk a little bit just about the process. Put that Michigan thing down.
That's for Matt Feeny only.
Oh, okay. But anyway, what we did, it was a very, I would say, extensive, thorough, and professional job that we did on all three of those proposals. They all were qualified, but the one that we ranked first jumped out at us because of all of the experience they have, the understanding of all the unique requirements that we in the city have, because we don't know where we want to put it yet or not, and I think they are highly qualified, and I think you'd be very pleased after they do their study. And they've done a lot of work in southwest Florida already, so I hope you approve that one. And the other F, which is applying for the grant, excuse me, to help support that, that's a no-brainer. We should really go ahead with that. Doesn't cost us anything to ask for money, so I think we should do that. And G, moving this area for the kids to get to school across to Terry Street, that's also a no-brainer. It goes right in with what you're doing with walkable, bikeable, community for the kids, because the kids are our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Morning, John.
Good morning, mayor, council. My name is John Pano, for the record, with CGT Kayaks. First, I just wanted to mirror everything Bonnie said and Kathy. One of the things I would also like to do is thank you. I've had a great time here in Benita Springs over the years. The city has been tremendous in their forward thinking towards the ecosystem, towards water, and I just wanted to say it's been a real pleasure working with you and with the Parks Department, and just a real kudos to start off. Secondly, again, like I said, I support everything that Bonnie just said, and I just want to urge everyone about our clean water crisis, how important it is to contact our state legislators and ask them to put people in the field now to start making things happen now. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I'm not speaking. My name is Marion Boyce Scott, and I live in Imperial Harbor in Benita Springs. And the reason I'm here today is to petition for help on our waterways, Spring Creek. I believe you were there in 2017, mayor, and Mike, and the other guy, I don't see him. But anyway, we were flooded. This was prior to Irma, and you voiced very loudly, and I cheered. You say, "We must get after our waterways. We have to get these under control." And I do say you have done good, especially with Imperial River, and that helped the flow that was coming at me. But now, I have got so much sulp and so much other things in it that it is blocked. I have very, I have flow, but it's very little. And I have resided there for 15 years. When I moved in, I had a nice little creek, the fish were there, the birds were there. And now then, it has grown over, and I can, I'm trying to recall the last time we had it dug out. It was when they put the bridge in, that went for the extra addition to Pablo Benita. And they dug it out, and they, everything was flowing good, but through the years, there has never been any maintenance. And that's why I'm here today, because we need extra maintenance on these waterways. And we have no, we have flow, but it's very little. And I'd be very appreciative if you come out, look at it, and give us a upgrade, what we're going to get done, and I appreciate you. Thank you for letting me speak today. I do have petitions here that I have, that are signed by members that live along that creek that would like to see progress, okay?
Thank you very much, ma'am. Please make sure we have your contact information. And I thought I'm going to direct staff, but Matt, you and I will schedule a time to go out.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Just give me the date. I'll be there.
Just make sure we have your contact information, ma'am.
It is here.
From, yes.
Who do I give it to?
Thank you.
You'll love it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate to have the privilege to speak today. I'd like to have, I'd like to see some action, if I could. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Say, "Council, what's your preference?" Motion to approve.
Second.
And we, and D, I'm sorry, and these addendums, we're fine with those? Those two addendums?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to pull D. Anything else? And then, let's see, L, Arlene.
Correct. Staff, staff has an update on that one as well.
Yes, okay. So item L, we have an update on. Okay, motion to approve the remainder. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Okay, D.
Okay, I pulled this, and contrary to the speakers, I don't believe it's a no-brainer in the sense, I'm very much in favor of what is being proposed here, but I do think we need clarification, which I've already had clarified, but I think we should do it publicly and is Arlene or somebody, or Nicole, or somebody going to talk about? And I, and I'm really concerned about a process that seems to be implied here, which it really isn't, it's just the wording, so could you just talk about it, Arlene, please?
Correct. In the green sheet, the wording of the clause to remove the item of which that we would, continuing the RFP, giving a year notice. To clarify, that removes the requirement of the city to provide a year notice. It is the pleasure of the city council to go out to RFP at any point in the future as well. It's the requirement of the notification a year in advance.
And so typically, we go to RFP at the end of the conclusion of the contract, which is not clear from the way the green sheet was worded, in my view, but I'm in favor of it in any case, anyway, and so I so moved the item.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Okay, and anything on item L, Arlene, or?
Correct. And before you, you have a revision to the proposal. We were able to work with Alta on a reduction, a reduction of the cost of this proposal, so you have the revised proposal in front of you, which is approximately $20,000, as opposed to the previous amount. The, we do know from the Alta that they have upgraded the criteria involved with this year's cycle, so we'll be working to meet those goals as well.
Counsel?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Counsel, any comments?
I just want to thank Benita Bay Group and everybody that worked with the baseball, with that grant program. I think it's great. It's great. I mean, we can get some work done with the baseball, so I do want to commend them and Benita Bay Group that you guys worked with, between you and Peter. Thank you guys for doing that with the plan.
The other Peter.
Both of you.
Peter is the correct answer. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything else? Okay. Proclamations and presentations. We're going to move on to mayor and council member items. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the second reading and public hearing of the following ordinance, and public comment is allowed.
Okay. An ordinance of the city of Benita Springs repealing and replacing ordinance 17-13, setting forth the Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, Scrivener's Errors, inclusion in the code, and effective date. As you recall, this is the, this is the item we have proposed to pull out all the Parks and Regulations references to actual fees in the code and adopt them instead by resolution. And then we've also addressed the issue with regards to the Little League and waiver of fees in that regard. So this is really just a flexibility issue from now on, and we're going to do this across the board with other code provisions that have fees provided for, just not cost-effective for the city to update its fees through a multi-hearing process when we should be updating those fees, if necessary at all, during the budget process, and to do it through a corresponding
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is a public hearing as well.
There's been a motion to approve and a second. Right. And counsel, any further discussion at the moment? Members of the public that would like to speak on this, please come forward at this Seeing none, counsel, what's your pleasure? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Okay. Derek, anything else?
Nothing additional on that one.
Okay. We're going to move on to public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time.
Good morning again, Kathy McGrath. Your Special Events Committee, we're starting to work on July 4th, Star Spangled Benita, and as you all know, it is a wonderful, wonderful event, free, and we have an awesome fireworks and laser show. Things for the kids, vendors, entertainment. We have not chosen our entertainment yet, but stay tuned. Be sure and come. And the other thing I want to remember is, anyone been by our new library lately? Yes. Wonderful. It's going to be such a wonderful addition to downtown Benita. And while I'm mentioning the library, a name came to mind, someone who, if you all remember, worked so hard for years. You remember Bill Longkart, our former council member? Bill was just, he had a committee, and he tried so hard always to upgrade our library, get things moving, so he really deserves our chance. Maybe we can put a little plaque there somewhere with his name on it. Thanks.
Thanks, Kathy. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, city attorney's items.
Okay, and I apologize, this is a, this is not going to be a first reading of this ordinance. We are, but this is just an update on where we are with temporary uses, as you recall. Councilman Dewitt raised the issue about firework sales and the tent situation, and we've, we've analyzed the issue, and really, the only fair way to address these concerns is to address them through temporary uses as a whole. I mean, because the fireworks, although they have particular issues that we will try to address for those uses, they're similar to Christmas trees and pumpkin sales and other issues, but they're dissimilar from our special events permits and, you know, your weekend fairs and other issues, so we're, we're working through that process. We expect to bring the first reading of that to you on June 5th, and then adoption in July, but it'll effectively be implemented as soon as possible.
Ms. Mayor, never let the attorney speak first. Actually, right now.
Last name Rooney, right?
We have, we have a pretty good draft right now. Actually, things have fallen into place. City Attorney's Office has been very helpful with providing some guidance. We are just making sure that it works very well with our special events ordinance and also with some of our other ordinances that we have that are going to be existing and not changed by this amendment.
Counsel?
Good.
Yeah, sounds good. Thanks for the continued work on it. Just got an email the other day, wondering where we're at on it, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
And that's it for me. I don't have anything additional.
Okay. City manager's items.
I'd like John to come forward. We're going to provide an update on the Benea Beach Road study implementation into our land development code.
Hello again. If you remember correctly, you have commissioned two studies out for Benea Beach Road. One was with Tool Design, another one was with DPZ Co-Design. Tool Design generally looked at the roadway function itself and the multimodal aspect, and DPZ was tasked with looking at land uses and designs for redevelopment and development along the sides of the road. We have started piecing together both of those studies into a comprehensive overlay district for Benea Beach Road. Our current overlay district was created generally with the idea that we just bring buildings closer to the road. There really wasn't much in the way of architectural standards or things that kept that area specific. It really limited uses or required planned developments or special exceptions for uses, did not really go very deep into design. So what we're trying to do now is not only look at how we want Benea Beach Road to be redeveloped, if and when that time comes, but also what development should look like along that road. And in that effort, I think what we're going to do is take a lot of the nodes created and proposed by DPZ Co-Design and simply incorporate them directly into the code. They did a fantastic job with how they've looked at the existing buildings and how we can improve access both for vehicles and for pedestrians, and modify the, not only the roads, but paths, and incorporate those in with a lot of the proposals that were given to us by Tool. So what I think you're going to see going forward is something where we really take the best of both of those studies and try to bring them together. The only thing I would like to have is if counsel will, because neither one of those were necessarily accepted, if you will provide guidance that we can use both of those as the basis for this new overlay district, I would appreciate that.
And just as a reminder, this is, the moratorium for Benea Beach Road is coming to an end, so these changes will be in process as that moratorium is coming to a close.
It'll go gently into that good night on, on what date?
I believe it's the end of this month.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel?
We'll be continuing to implement the principles of all those studies, the comprehensive plan amendment for Benea Beach Road visioning, the tool design study, as well as DPZ's study as well.
With the end of the moratorium that we, we still have, we are going to incorporate the studies, right? And that's part of the code already.
Yes.
We're implementing the studies into the code, so John will continue to bring revisions to that as the process.
But since it's sunsetting at now, what do we do in the meantime?
Well, there, there are two, two issues at play. First, now the comprehensive plan is in place.
Right.
It's provisions control, even over our existing land development regulations. So when we were in the moratorium, all permits that were issued had to be in compliance with the vision, and that, and that vision was basically a upheld vision. It was being, it was being challenged. Now the vision is strictly in place, so, so the process that we had under the moratorium, where projects still could move forward if they were in compliance with the proposed comp plan, they still have to move forward, except now it's no longer a proposed comp plan. It is the comp plan. So even though our regulations don't match up directly with it, the comp plan under Florida law is still controlling. So all those provisions that say, you know, so as we're approving all of our developments, they still have to be in compliance, we are effectively in a zoning in progress situation now because we have draft regulations. They'll be coming to you beginning in June, and they'll be implementing it further, filling in some of the gaps, but there is effectively no change from a regulatory standpoint between the moratorium period and where we are right now, because that comp plan is now in effect.
Okay. Thank you.
And really, the only thing that counsel probably should keep in the back of your mind is, right now, what we're looking at is probably having two different schedule of uses for that corridor. And what you may want to consider is how, how specific you would like to be, because we are going to adopt these nodes, we are going to be looking for, Ian, if you remember, in the Tool Design Plan had actually created different designations for part of each section of Beach Road. Do you want to have specific regulations for each of those sections, or would you like to keep this a little more general? And that's just something that we can talk about as we go forward, but it is going to be some, a very important part of this.
Sounds good.
Great. Thank you. Arlene?
Further, sorry, when I was giving you the update on L, I was remiss. I wanted to thank you, the deputy mayor. He was involved with providing us some guidance, and we, and helped us with the pricing at Alta, so we appreciate that. And then, the other things, I just wanted to remind you that DPZ will be here coming the next month, in two weeks. We have our workshop the night before the city council meeting, and then they will be here for office hours during the day, and then they will be presenting at our city council meeting that evening. They will have an update as well on the bamboo properties. We're also looking how to incorporate our properties that are designated, our local properties that are designated as historic. And then to continue, we will also have, excuse me, our update on our emergency preparedance plan.
Arlene, can I stop you just for a second?
Sure.
With DPZ, can you send out a reminder to all of us? I think I've scheduled time with them, but I'm not positive.
Okay, sure.
Could you just send out a reminder to all of us that want to schedule time with them? Thanks so much.
And then as well, at our next city council meeting, Tony will be providing an update on our emergency management plan with Carly, and we've invited some of our community partners to be here with us as well as we start off our storm season for 2019.
Great. Thank you. Matt, anything?
No. Thank you, though.
Okay. Mayor and counsel reports. Amy.
Greg.
The only thing I have is, as the liaison for the Special Events Committee, I know Kathy touched on it about the Fourth of July Parade and Fourth of July Events. Just remind everybody that we had the parade also going on. The theme this year is called Bring the Noise. You can go on to the Benea Springs Fire Department website or the local union's website if you want to do a float or any type of information, so.
Thank you. Laura?
I'm good. Thank you.
Pete?
I give an update on Seminole Gulf. So remember when we left the trail? We got put on hold last year because CSX was in negotiations with Seminole Gulf to sell the part of the railroad down here to Seminole Gulf. Seminole Gulf is a, was a leaseholder on that. It had a 30-year lease remaining. So I reported on this before, but just to refresh your recollection on this, they did their thing, but the bottom line is, they actually, CSX still does have a remainder interest with respect to any deal it's worked out with respect to a rails-to-trails there. So now, on Monday, I missed a zoning meeting because I sent you a note that Nick Bettes actually was ill, he couldn't make it, so it was Pat calling myself, Todd McNew, who is with the Conservation Fund, who we're working with, a very good guy, and Bruce Fay, Matt knows very well, and.
And the Fay family as well, yeah.
And Robert Fay. So we took a three-hour ride on a truck with steel wheels from Oliko Road to, basically to Wiggins Pass to take a look. So, you know, we were spitballing ideas in terms of the whole thing, buy the whole thing, lease the thing, lease part of it. These are all up in the air, all right. The next step, which I don't think is like for right now, for various reasons, would be to think about an appraisal there. The appraisal methodology for railroad conversions is pretty funky. It's called over-the-fence valuations, and without getting into every detail, you end up with, many times you end up with a very large price that the railroads would like. But, you know, they're capitalist, that's what they want, you know, so. And I actually think the Sarasota prices, it's a wonderful thing that the county did in Sarasota, but it's one heck of a price that they paid for the last leg. So that's basically it in a nutshell. So obviously, I've been talking to Arlene about this, and when we would suggest an appraisal, who does it? How we're doing it with Astero? Are we doing it with Seminole Gulf? Are we just doing it ourself? Is something we have to do a little more molding about. So that's the report.
Okay. Very good. Counsel?
That sounds really exciting, and thank you for the effort that you've extended there and the others that are assisting you. I know that that's one reason we've made progress, is because people have come forward. It would be an extraordinary thing if we could execute that at some time, or at least get that in the pipeline.
Right. Well, thank you.
Counsel?
It's not going to be for free.
No. Well, that's why we need these partners, and I assume that's part of the, the things that you're looking in.
Yeah, right.
The different, not only.
And there are other issues that are in it. Let's leave it at this, what happens north of us, what happens very north of us could affect us.
Mm-hmm. And Sal, we could Collier County.
Well, yeah, well, there's, there is a tail in Collier County, and so it's not a big part of it.
Great. Thanks, Peter. Mike?
I'm good.
Fred?
An academic question of Arlene, based on the public comment about the problem with Spring Creek in the Imperial Harbor area. Is that covered by this agreement that I think we entered into with South Ward Water Management, or did that ever get executed?
Spring Creek is, is included in that, that agreement.
So, then, we could show them the mess too, right? To be straightened up?
Probably through the agreements with Lee County. So, we would reach out to their natural resources folks and kind of in conjunction with.
I'm sorry, just to follow up. I know that there is a contract to snag and drag it with the county. Don't, isn't that on the list? What exactly is the, is county committed to on Spring Creek?
It's, it's the Water Management District that's committed to it. The agreement is with the county as a whole, but it has water bodies that are within municipalities. And Spring Creek is in that list. It is more directed towards snagging and clearing, which would be vegetation. But I think it has a minor provision for sediment removal if it's, you know, directly attributable to flooding or storm events.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
And Matt, I would ask you to put your thinking cap on, 'cause you'll see my introduction here. But so, the meeting that Matt and I went to last week with Congressman Rooney, that ultimately Governor Ron DeSantis ended up attending as well. And of course, was, was, you know, by invitation only, and it was a unique meeting. It was a unique opportunity for me to meet Noah Valenstein and others that normally you wouldn't meet, the regional director from Atlanta for FEMA, right, Matt?
For, for the EPA.
EPA. I'm sorry. Okay. For EPA was there and some very good conversations, some very good access. People from Collier County, Lee County, elected officials, mayors. And it was a nice meeting. And I guess, what scientific data or what would you extract from that, Matt, to share with counsel?
I think that there, I mean, in, you know, to broad brush stroke, there's a lot of questions that remain unanswered that are currently being taken up for study and consideration by, you know, FGCU, as well as folks at the Center for Disease Control and Department of Health to try and really understand what the impacts are, you know, with these cyanobacteria outbreaks. So, there's, you know, they're focusing their efforts on looking into, you know, what the effects are, but they have study to do to really fully understand that.
Well, and let's face it, the bar, or my bar, anyway. I'll say my personal bar is extremely high on these issues with certainly Governor DeSantis's early environmental actions. You see recently now, President Trump has come out in full support of the Everglades to the tune of 200-
Billion.
Billion. 200 billion locally here. And for the Everglades, for the Everglades restoration. I mean, I'm just saying that it's, what we said, what I said at the meeting is that it's like the stars, the moons, and the planets are aligning here environmentally, is my only point. And I made that at the meeting, and that was well-received. And so, I look forward to meeting with Secretary Valenstein from EPA this summer. We're in the process of scheduling a meeting. I wanna make a contact with him and work with him and introduce him to Matt, perhaps have him come and present at city council, but just continue to work through these environmental issues. I guess, you know, I'm showing my true colors. I'm excited about what I saw there. But of course, you know, there was then a press conference, and then there was protesters. So, it was a full meeting.
Oh, it was fun.
Yeah.
I just have one comment, because I think one of the issues, and I know you're not supposed to talk about anything, but it's something that I think we could take up, is that there has been, I think, legitimate complaints about communication of whatever information or lack thereof transmitted to people when there are questions that are asked. And I think that we can ask our partners and like Department of Health and the Environmental Protection, even that that information somehow gets communicated. I think your connection with these entities, the hires up, would be useful. But we can do that without those people, because we're the, we're the ultimate communicators to our residents. So, that's, that's where I would like to see progress, because it's gonna take time for people to really figure out the scientific end of it.
Well, that means we've gotta get hotwire covering our meetings in Benita Bay and Pelican Atlantic and other places.
Well, it's just that somebody has to transmit the information to be communicated, and then, we can distribute it from there. That's where I think there was a problem.
Counsel? Anything else? That, those are, that's what I wanted to discuss and review. Thanks, Matt. Anything else you wanna add or? No? Okay. Okay. Approval of the minutes?
So moved.
We're gonna do, so approval of the minutes. There's a first motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Public comment?
Mayor, Honorable Counsel, my name is John Pano. I'm with CGT Kayaks. One of the things I just wanted to say is thank you again. It's been a privilege and an honor to work with the city over the years. Your forward thinking in the environment is one of the reasons that brought me here and has kept me here. And I wanna also do a little report on the meeting with Governor, Congressman Rooney on May 10th with what we call water activists. But there were many scientists and people there very aware of what's going on. And there's been a lot of science done already. We know a lot of facts about red tide and about blue-green algae. We know what makes it happen. And it's very important now for us to get people in the field. That's what we're lacking. There hasn't been funding for it before. And the people that are holding the purse strings, the people that can make that happen is the state legislature. So, I urge everybody to contact their state legislators and urge them, beg them, plead them to put money in, into the field and people into the field to deal with our water crisis before we are in the middle of the summer and we're trying to figure out what to do then. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Members of the public?
Good morning. Ben Hershinson, Fair winds HOA. I just wanna make a comment, because I'm sitting here and I'm saying, gosh, a meeting, you know, with all the issues you folks discuss, I mean, to end the meeting in less than an hour, so I'm only up here to kill time. That said, that said, it's impressive to see all the initiatives that are, that are being undertaken by the city council. And I know a lot of them behind the scenes and stuff that goes on. Sometimes government works slow. But I have to tell you, I've lived in a lot of communities and towns, you know, up in the Northeast. And since no one is up for election immediately, I wanna say something that I'm trying to be apolitical here. This is gonna be perhaps my best experience in any community, because you know why? It's, this council is responsive. And I have bothered a lot of people in this town, the various department heads. And I have to tell you, it's so impressive to see how responsive everybody is. I've never seen anything like it. It's almost like crazy. What's in the air and the water? I have no idea, but don't change anything, because these people are really great. I mean, they're busy, and you, if you send an email, you're gonna get a response. And if you make a phone call and they're not there, they're gonna get back to you. But I wanna say one thing. It's encouraging to see different people get up and talk about stuff, things that bother them, things that maybe are positive. So, today, nothing's really bothering me, which is unusual for those people who know my personality. This is exciting, and I would say this. And I'm pushing the same thing up in a small town I live in, up in Maine.